So this will lead us with the, sorry, the one that has the most discussion year after year. I would like for everyone to take in consideration that we are going to potentially find some funding for the Boys and Girls Club if we're going to, if we're going to try to, try to get at a pop trend of it, which I would really like to do so. Obviously, talking to them, they feel that fifty thousand, if they can get a fifty thousand dollar funding between us and the city, that that will for sure open the doors issue. So my recommendation would be up for us to try to find twenty-five thousand dollars total to, and have the city look forward, and that would be, we would donate twenty-five thousand if the city of LaFollette would match it. But that being said, we have to have a funding source. Honestly, we've cut, we have cut fifty-five hundred so far out of this budget. So if we want to try to cut the remaining, basically nineteen-five, it would have to be in this category. It might be tough, but that, that's kind of where we're at.
Can I give you all some insight on some of these?
Yeah, absolutely.
So for starters, we sent out three notices to nonprofit, on file notice, well, we sent out three layers. The first one we sent out was on January fifteenth. The second one we sent out on February fourteenth to those who hadn't submitted, and then we sent others out on March seventh, the final notice. In that letter, we said that we were going to put in an automatic request for current year level on that date to make the number, and the reason we did that was to make the numbers kind of even out and show, reflect what we probably likely requested, but we didn't make it known in the March seven later that failure to submit to the Finance Department by March seventeenth from involving the Finance Department requesting a default budget request at current twenty-four, twenty-five level, and may serve nonprofit committed to county commission that nonprofit has not submitted budget request for default twenty-five, twenty-six, which may result in higher likelihood that an organization will not receive funding from the county at five twenty-six, twenty-five, twenty-six budget. If our organization is proclamating a coming F-125, twenty-six budget, request documentation will be required prior to payment being issued. And with that, too, I do just want to say, although we put in default requests ourselves and volunteers, there are a few squads that we did that. Along here, we had to do that with disabled veterans, Appalachia Chapter one oh five, Special Olympics, and the Campbell County Teacher Supply Depot. And I do just want to add on these, one thing you all need to be mindful of, and the Health Council, I'd even add CASA in there, Imagination Library, Ethra, trying to think if there's any other on this list, that, the Historical Society, or all organizations that provide services on, I would say, services that are provided on behalf of the county. So, for example, the Historical Society, which I've received that contribution for several years, but one of our volunteers actually currently serves as a record coordinator. So just be mindful, that's something I would be mindful of, in my personal, in my names.
I did.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm going to start from the bottom, and I would like for us to kind of go over each one of these as we go. I'm not going to give our connection on all of them. I think we need to do it line by line, and then we can, we can kind of go from there. It can have a different recommendation on how we should handle it, and then we can do that as well. Do you want to go over it line by line, and then vote at the end, or do you want to vote on it as we go?
I think we probably need to go line by line, and just vote as we go.
Okay, okay. You good with that, Pam?
What page is that on?
That is page three, in third page. I mean, this one like this, it's got three highlighted areas on it.
Okay.
Are you there? We already discussed the honor board section. I will start from the bottom, working my way up. So Campbell County Teacher Supply Depot, we gave them five hundred last year, their request, and five hundred this year. My opinion, I would, I would leave it at five hundred dollars pending that they improvise with documentation.
One thing I will say with them, I don't think in current year they've received any payment, because they've not submitted invoices or anything to us.
Okay.
And they had a default request in, so that's just something to be aware of.
So we did not, we didn't pay them anything this year?
And as of, no, they still have time to submit, but as of May, I'd have to go back and double check, but as of May seventh, I don't believe that they have received payment or not received invoices, and we've not received the payment request for default twenty-five, twenty-six.
Well, in that case, if, if that's the case, I would say that we just need to cut that budget. If they not sent us anything, and they didn't send a request either, I would say we probably just need to cut that, in my opinion. But it's up to you guys, or what you guys want to do.
Well, we've asked for it, Doc, and they served five hundred.
Yes. And they didn't send anything for the request that we gave them, the five hundred last year, correct?
Correct.
So.
That's not necessarily their head to their.
Yeah. So as of, you know, maybe a few weeks ago, we did the five hundred that they got last year, still sitting there. That my understanding, is that correct?
I would say.
Yeah. So I'll go ahead, if there's no other discussion on that, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we cut the five hundred dollars for the Campbell Teacher Supply Depot. Reason being, they've not submitted paid work, and the, they didn't, they still have not collected the five hundred dollars that we provided them last year. I'll make that motion. Do I have a second on that?
I have a second.
Second by Mr. Baird. Roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Special Olympics, I know we're still waiting on a formal request, is that the only thing we're waiting on, on them?
Um, yes, they, I believe they've received, they've received any payment current, up to date, current year, and they've just not submitted documentation or requests for next year.
Okay. My opinion is we would leave that, my recommendation, I'll go ahead and make the motion that we provide them with the same as budgeted for twenty-four, twenty-five year, which is three thousand dollars, pending they provide us with a formal request.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Baird. Roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. Next one up is the Senior Assistance Home Assistance Services. Budget last year was two thousand, request this year is two thousand. Do you have any insight on that?
Um, I believe they've submitted all their documentation, I'd have to double check to see if they've received payment. One thing I do want to add, and again, this is my personal opinion, I'm going to be for leaving them at two thousand. One thing I do want to add, they have a representative that helps the county every night, just about every night that our veterans breakfast, too. So that, I'm going to make a motion to leave them at two thousand.
Got a motion by Mr. Marle to leave the Senior Assistance Home Assistance Service at two thousand, as budgeted for the twenty-four, twenty-five year.
I'll second.
You want to second it? Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Vehicle Resource Center, Scott County Home and Shelter, budget last year ten thousand, they're requesting twenty thousand this year. But is there any insight on them?
Um, no, I think they submitted for an increase in payment, I believe they're currently getting payment. I think last year they received an increase from eighty-five hundred to ten thousand, I think they requested twenty thousand last year, and we increased them from eighty thousand to ten thousand.
Um, I believe that's correct, I'm almost second.
I'd have to go back and double check, but the way that's what happened.
My recommendation is, is, my recommendation would be to drop it to nine thousand, that's my recommendation, but I'm open to anyone's opinion as far as that goes. The words I'd say is, you know, it's, it's up to this body, it's up to the commission, or trying to make some type of decisions if we want to try to help fund the Boys and Girls Club, so making up a little bit ground, is just kind of where we're, kind of where we're at. Anybody, anybody want to add to that?
If you want, if you want to let, lower it to nine thousand of itself.
Lower it to nine thousand. We loved it from eighty-five last year to ten, but I would, I would, I would lower it to nine thousand this year, you know, in hopes that we can raise the backup next year. My understanding, you know, I think once the Boys and Girls Club get open, they can be self-sufficient. So, you know, everybody makes a cut this year in order to make a difference somewhere. If there's any, if there's no other discussion, I'll go ahead and make the motion to make the Vehicle Resource Centers, Scott County Home and Shelter, make it nine thousand dollars for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. Do I have a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second.
Second. Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
The next one is State Campbell County. Last year, we didn't provide any funding, they're requesting three thousand, and this year, my recommendation would be to, to not provide any, we did provide a, a state service through the animal shelter that we provide for, so my opinion is we would leave that at zero. I'm going to make a motion that we, do we need to make a motion to reduce the amount that's provided?
I don't, I think, I don't think you have to, or I think you just have to, if you want to.
Okay, I will just skip it then. Next one is Postmark with Fallout, they are requesting six thousand, we provided them with five thousand last year, I think they do a, a good job with what they do up there. My, my recommendation is that we leave that at five thousand.
Oh.
You want to make that motion?
Y'all have a good motion.
Motion by Mr. Marle to leave the Postmark with Fallout at five thousand dollars as budgeted for the twenty-four, twenty-five year.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair? The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. Next one is Alliance Club of Campbell County, we provided five thousand last year, they are requesting six thousand this year. Do you, do you provide us any information on that, or?
I don't, I don't think I have any additional.
Okay. Does anybody have a recommendation on the Alliance of Campbell County?
Or you want to leave it the same as last year?
I'm open to, I'm open to recommendation.
I'm not going to recommend it because it's the same as last year.
Okay. You got to vote, or you want to make that a motion?
Yes.
Got a motion by Mr. Baird that we leave the Alliance of Campbell County at five thousand as budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. I have a second. I'll second it. Roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. Next one up would be Ethra, budget last year was sixty-two hundred, they're requesting C-two hundred again this year.
This, this one, I think, is a little different, and it is treated as a contribution, I'd have to look more at it, but I think this is some type of, don't hold me to this, but some type of services that they provide through the whole district, I don't think this is kind of our share of that. I'd have to look more into that, not, again, don't hold me to that, but, um, with knowledge of that, I think it's probably best to leave it the same.
Okay.
And if we, and that may be something we may want to look, may want to look more into next year, but I think for current year, I think we probably, just to be safe, we believe it the same.
Okay. You want to make that into a motion?
Yeah, I'll make that into a motion.
Got a motion by Mr. Marle to leave the Ethra contribution of sixty-two hundred dollars as budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. I have a second on that.
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. This elevator is Appalachia Chapter number one oh five, they requested thirty, or, the budget last year for thirty-five hundred, requesting thirty-five hundred this year. Provide us with, they, on that again, they didn't turn in?
They've not turned in, but I believe current year, I believe they're up to date receiving payment.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we leave that to second thirty-five hundred.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Say that did pass this committee. Next up is Community Health Beast Tennessee Imagination Library, budgeted fifteen thousand, requested fifteen thousand. Any insight on that?
Um, so there was just divided up into two requests, and the Imagination Library, that's kind of one of those services that, pretty much all counties that participate have to have someone do it, or the county has to do it, and I think they spend way more than fifteen grand a year on this. In fact, last month, we did some confirmations for them, and they did a really good job, and that, I'm going to make a motion to leave the Imagination Library fifteen thousand.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mr. Marle to leave the Imagination Library a budget of fifteen thousand, as was in twenty-four, twenty-five. Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. The next up would be Community Health Beast Tennessee, budget fifteen thousand, requested fifteen thousand. Any insight there?
Um, not right off, I'd have to look back at packet, and I do think, I believe last year, I want to say twenty, say twenty-three, twenty-four, I believe they got, twenty-four, twenty-five, they got an increase of five thousand, so they went from ten to fifteen in this, and that's about all the insight I have.
My recommendation would be is, is that we look into doing a cutoff this year. I would say, my, my recommendation would be to drop it down to, down to twelve thousand, that's a three thousand dollar cut, and still more than what they had before we gave them a raise. Have a middle, a middle ground area, so my recommendation would be to drop it from fifteen to twelve this budget cycle. Anybody have any discussion on that, or recommendation that's different than mine? See, and then I'll make a motion that we drop the budget on Community Health Beast Tennessee from fifteen thousand to twelve thousand for the budget year twenty-five, twenty-six. Do I have a second? Let's call it a second. Motion fails for a lack, lack of a second. I'm open to any recommendation.
I think, I hate to do this, but I have to look more at the financials, but knowing everything I know, if we're trying to find money for Boys and Girls Club, and they got a five thousand dollar increase last year, I'm for leaving it at something, but more than where it was at, um, been twelve, I thought it's good with eleven.
Eleven. Got a motion on the floor for a budget of eleven thousand for Community Health Beast Tennessee for budget year twenty-five, twenty-six. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. Next one up is the Helen Ross McNabb Child Assistance Service of Tennessee. Last year, they received five thousand dollars, this year they're requesting fifty-two hundred. Do you have any insight on that?
No, I'm trying to recall if they got cut or encut or saved so much, I can't.
I don't think we cut them, I don't believe.
Not a hundred percent certain. I think we definitely can't afford the increase, so, I would have to look more at it, I want to say the many states here in Campbell, what we give them, but I'm not, I'm not certain if I have, I'd have to look at the packet, I'll have one of those in front of me, so.
Um, do you have any input on that, Mr. Baird? So, the money stays here, it looks like it has to do with child services to the core Looking at the report that they provided here, a lot of it looks like it has to do with addiction, or some type of disorders. They've addressed the treatment issues such as trauma, anger, and conflict resolution, feminine names, code of infancy, social custody legal issues, as well as the defined skills needed to achieve well-centered recovery. So that's, that's what they've got in here for, one service they provide for the county, and as she stated, the money does stay here in Campbell County. Does anybody got any discussions on what we just went over? See, and then I'll make a motion, motion would be to keep that number at five thousand dollars as requested in the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Marle, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. The next one up would be CASA, budget last year fifteen thousand, and requesting again this year fifteen thousand. Any insight on that?
Um, I think this is a great standard one that we do every year, I think they, I think the money that we give, don't hold me to this, I think it stays here, and I believe it's CASA in Campbell County, and I think they're a valuable asset to our county, and I am to our children and families, and with that, I think I'm going to make a motion to leave them at fifteen thousand.
Got a motion by Mr. Marle, leave that fifteen thousand. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Let's say that did pass this committee. Next one up would be the Campbell Culture Coalition, we, budgeted five thousand last year, the request for this coming budget cycle is five thousand as well, probably spent some there.
Um, I think this is a standard one, I think we do every year, I think we've got some people from the Culture Coalition here tonight, I think, I mean, I think they put on Lily Blue Festival, and I think they do a good job with it, and that, I'm going to make a motion to kind of keep it at current five thousand.
I'll second that.
Got a motion by Mr. Marle to keep the budget, five thousand dollars for the Campbell Culture Coalition for the next budget cycle. Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marle?
Yes.
Dwayne Bair?
Yes.
Charles Bair?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Um, next one, Campaign Shrine Club, three thousand dollars budgeted, requested three thousand for this upcoming budget. Insight on that one?
Um, I believe this is a standard one that's been done for several years, I think it, it's kind of, it's played through many, so it plays from the local level, I think, to, I don't want to say national, but I think our. so it plays from the local level, I think, to, I don't want to say national, but I think, I obviously have local shiners still wanting to work.
I'll make a motion, I think it's the same.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Baird that we leave, uh, the Shrine Club, Community Shrine Club at three thousand, had a budget in the previous year of twenty-four, twenty-five. I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Marlowe, roll call.
Zach Marlowe?
Yes.
Dwight Baird?
Yes.
Charles Baird?
Yes.
The three guesses.
Next one is the Campaign Historical Society, five thousand budget for the twenty-four, twenty-five year. Uh, and the request is for five thousand present account of budget cycle. Insight on that one, Mr. Marlowe?
Um, this is a, um, I think they've received five thousand for the last several years. And I, and again, recently, last year, I think one of their volunteers took on, and now services are open, I could coordinator, um. I don't know, I hope somebody talked about they might request more in the future, I think their finances are pretty tight. And I think, um, again, they do provide services, um, for the county that we would otherwise probably have to raise, you know, for.
Okay. Um. That being said, I'll make a motion that we leave it at the five thousand dollars, um, as was budgeted for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget cycle, and what was requested for the twenty-five, twenty-six budget cycle.
Okay, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Baird, roll call.
Zach Marlowe?
Yes.
Dwight Baird?
Yes.
Charles Baird?
Yes.
The three guesses.
I'd say that it did pass this committee. Um, the next one is the Community Health Council, twenty-five hundred budget for the twenty-five, twenty-year. Uh, their request for this upcoming year is twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, insight on that one, Mr. Marlowe?
And this is a standard one that I think we've done for several years. The Health Council, I think they're an own profit, I don't know how it all flows through, I think it may... Don't know, I don't need to speak on it, but it is... Do we have their packet? It may be, if we do, it may be about the second one, down, second, third, and round. The way I printed it, it should have been, well, it shouldn't have looked like that, I probably wouldn't have done it, depending on the way I think I...
Oh, that's, that's historical.
Was the historical on that thing, I think that's...
It's historical. We got confused, because... Close the one you know.
I didn't find my name.
Okay. Um, we got Tobacco Use Prevention, Wellness Motivation Programs, Ten Year Pregnancy, Physical Activity Nutrition, Health Fairs. This is what their budget is, is what they're requesting money for.
I think they put on the health fair every year for, I think, is it fifth grade students?
Didn't say exactly what they did, but that's just what they said the names for.
Seems like what I recall too, I think they've done some community events, or they help out them, and... Jellicoe, so I think they're, I think they do a lot of good for overall community, so they're children, seniors, and adults.
Like I said, the request is twenty-five hundred dollars for the, um, for the coming budget, and as what we budgeted last year. Um, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we, um, that we approve the twenty-five hundred dollars that was requested for the upcoming budget year.
And I'll, second.
Second by Mr. Marlowe, roll call.
Zach Marlowe?
Yes.
Dwight Baird?
Yes.
Charles Baird?
Yes.
The three guesses.
I'd like to say that we did pass this committee. Um, so after looking at everything, uh, it looks like we have cut this budget by about eleven thousand, um, total, which I don't think is, uh, unreasonable, um. And, you know, if we decide we want to go further with, um, with the Boys and Girls Club, obviously, I mean, we need to find some more funding elsewhere, just keep that in mind. Uh, is there anything else that we need to go over for the nonprofit?
Um, hold on just a second. Sorry, I've got a phone right here, I'm trying to... So, what that puts, um, so yes, that puts total at a... Twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted was four twenty-eight, one sixty-five. Twenty-five, twenty-six recommended so far is a four seventeen, one sixty-five.
Yeah. So, keep that in mind, uh, moving forward. Is there anything that we missed that you think may need to be discussed?
I think even I would not receive... I think it probably wouldn't hurt if we wanted to go ahead and set aside a placeholder for the remaining, for the eleven thousand for Boys and Girls Club, that probably wouldn't hurt if that's the committee committee.
Okay. Um. I guess the biggest thing, so we can set that aside, um, within the commission side label, go forward. Obviously, uh, we can just pull from this and then pull from something else, is that correct? Or how do we need to do that?
I mean, if it were me, what I would, I mean, to find, you don't have to cut somewhere, um. What I would do, if it were me, I think it, I'd go ahead and put in a placeholder for pending a request, because if you know you're going to receive a request, if you go ahead and you make it look like you led it and you recommend it less, that could, for financial statement purposes, I think it would matter, so maybe write in a placeholder.
Okay. You understand what he's saying there? Um. I think we go ahead and, um, I'll make a motion that we go ahead and earmark eleven thousand dollars, uh, for the Boys and Girls Club, pending, pending a formal request, uh, from them. Uh, and this would also be, uh, with the Seale Fog Matching Air Donation.
Now, I think I've heard somewhere, they're looking at twenty-five thousand.
Okay, so it's going to be a county and city match, and...
That's the way I would, we can do it however this body wants to do it, that would be my recommendation, uh, is that, that we would, that we would have the city match what we put in. Uh, that way, you know, we're not funding, you know, seventy-five percent of it, or, or something like that, that it's, you know, it's equal on both sides. That's my recommendation, but I'm up to anything that, that you may want to do differently, or Mr. Marlowe's do differently. If you have any, anything else that you would make, want to change on that, I'm, I'm, I'm open to that discussion. You have anything different that you would want to?
I don't know, but it's in our, I don't know that it's in our best interest to tie what we do to the city, but we do what the cities are doing, and, and, and city, I think partnerships are great. I don't think that that's the best approach to take, um, to say all of that, but, um, I certainly think if we're going to be benefiting the Boys and Girls Club, and the city absolutely needs to be contributing to it, um, and I think, um, and I think when you look, I think eventually it will benefit the county as a whole, that what's, that I think in the beginning, it's going to primarily benefit the city of Charlotte, so I'm certainly, I mean, I think it's a big contingent upon our budget.
Well, do we need to change it where it's contingent, instead of being contingent on the city match and contingent on it, you know, operating? And the reason to say that is, is you know, you don't want to turn around and give out, you know, money and say it's not even, not even open. I mean, we, we ran into that issue before, where, you know, we, we get, you know, commissioners gave money and then...
Oh, I know, I know there was a, there was a former commissioner in my district that went to his grave, and then what happened to the five hundred dollars that he gave, uh, within his personal name?
Yeah, absolutely, so, yeah, we don't want to really make it in that situation where we're giving some money out and then, for example, say, you know, if it doesn't open up and we gave this money and, oh, there it is. So, um, you know, do we need to, to tie it to the building that it's opening, or, you know, how?
Now, is there a chance that I may also get some money from the county or the state?
I mean, I, that was my recommendation, um, I spoke to a couple of them about that, uh, you know, I, I don't know for sure. A hundred percent, I don't know, but I, I, I tell them that that would be the direction that I would go. But we can, I mean, how do you, how do you want to do it?
I want to be careful here, because I don't want, I don't want to encourage the city to give less than they're already contemplating. That's why I'm struggling on how to word the motion, and... If you word it in such a way, and set aside the eleven thousand with the... Why don't we just not set a, an expectation of a certain dollar amount from the city, of maybe we shouldn't be getting that, but maybe we should just say that we'll set aside the eleven thousand in the formal request and that there's an expectation from the city of Charlotte to contribute. And actually, I'd be willing to say, see, of Charlotte and other municipalities, for the county to contribute. Because in the end, it's going to, it's going to benefit every citizen in the county. And it has the potential to benefit the whole county.
My, my only concern is, is still, that we get into the problem where we get the money and it doesn't open, doesn't open up. That's why I want, I mean, it's kind of things, not a, not a huge deal for me, but, I mean, I don't want to give taxpayer dollars and then something happen, not, not, not happen. You know, I don't really know how we can go about it, um, really, truly.
Okay, why don't we do fifty-eight, to set aside eleven thousand and fifty-eight, five hundred as a placeholder for potential contribution for the Boys and Girls Club with the, with the guidelines of contribution to be determined under later date. It's a formal request, isn't it?
Have you all that?
I'm not, I, we'll reword that, don't, that's, that's confusing how I've said that. I don't, I mean, I don't know where else to tell.
I mean, I, I like that idea better, um, you know, and it, what we would do is, we just have to have another nonprofit committee meeting to release those funds.
Uh, that would probably, that probably would require actual full commission.
Well, that's what I'm saying, come here and then have to go to, for the full commission.
But, I mean, um, yeah, at the hand hand, I can obviously, um, well, maybe I'll contribute more, um, if the core group, if, I don't know, they're willing to, to contribute or anything, um, that may be a possibility as well, so I think... Okay, I'm going to try to make this simple. Um, motion to set aside eleven thousand dollars as a placeholder for Boys and Girls Club with the guidelines for the contribution to be determined under later date. Because we've not, we've not received a formal written request, we've not even showed up in, well, we may have received a formal request, because that did give us the presentation. So, let's just say placeholder, and we'll determine the rest under later date.
I'll have her read this back to you once she gets it written down, and we can see if that works for you.
And I know that's confusing.
Set aside eleven thousand dollars for the Boys and Girls Club, the guidelines to be determined under later date.
Do you, do you want the what, what line of?